Evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting on March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. It's been called the order. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Alvarez.
Here.
Councilwoman Hamilton.
Here.
Councilwoman Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mari Medina.
Is in the building. He just got up.
And Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item three, please.
Receive update on the San Bruno Parks Assessment Project and provide feedback.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Travis Carr. I'm the Community Services Director. Tonight, you'll be receiving a report and presentation on where we are at with our park assessment that we launched last summer here in the city of San Bruno. Tonight, I am joined by Lauren Ivy Thomas from MIG, and she'll be doing the main portion of the presentation for us tonight. One thing that I just wanted to point out is that when I came into the city in September of two thousand and twenty three, one of the first things that I did is took a tour of our park system with our park manager, Dan Menazia. And one of the things that we talked about is the need to look at a lot of our deferred maintenance and different opportunities that we have in our parks. And it was a little daunting, a little overwhelming in some of our areas. But I felt the need for us to do some type of park assessment to ensure that we were taking these in the proper order and really be thoughtful about what we tackled first as far as our parks and some of the deferred maintenance, and then looking at other opportunities to having parks. The city did have a park rescue plan that actually expired in twenty eighteen. So this just gave us a basically a pared down glimpse at what types of things that we could accomplish in our parks. So we did bring MIG on, and Lauren Ivy Thomas is here to speak, so I will turn it over to Lauren.
Hi.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So, we'll do a presentation here. All right. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Lauren Ivy Thomas. I'm the project manager for this park assessment. I'm a licensed landscape architect and the AICP planner, so my specialty is parks and recreation master planning. And I'm very excited to present to you our progress on the San Bruno Park Assessment. So. Sorry, it's been a bit long. So please know, this is going to be a very info-heavy presentation. I'm compacting a lot of info in that we've provided to Travis and his team over the course of months in a variety of different documents. So I will be as efficient as I can, but please know that there's also plenty of other backup resources and reports that we've provided to Travis that you guys can have access to. So today, I'm going to provide you with this introduction that I'm getting right now. I'm going to talk about the existing conditions in your park system. I'm going to share with you the results of our community engagement that we've been able to include in this park assessment, and then the key directions. So we're not quite at the recommendations phase of our park assessment, but we are now being seen what we call a key direction where we think the city should move when it comes to addressing the park and recreation system. All right. Oh, I have to click here. Okay, so the purpose of the San Bruno Park Assessment is to inventory the city's existing park sites. We want to know their current conditions, their functionality. We were originally tasked to do demographic analysis to understand how parks needs might change or are relevant currently, and then also to assess site capacity for improvements. This park assessment will provide recommendations that will eventually be refined into prioritize into a prioritized action plan, which will essentially be a list of capital improvement projects for San Bruno Parks. Advisory direction for this parks assessment, our first interaction took place with the Parks and Recreation Commission in November two thousand and twenty four, where we presented to them our condition assessment, kind of like the state of the system of your parks. And then now we're meeting with you, the city council, to chair not only that condition assessment, but also the community engagement findings and key directions. I'd like to point out that at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, we heard that there was a need for an additional community engagement, and so the amazing community engagement that we have so far was the direct result of that meeting and those commissioners. All right, let's take a look at your existing system. For this parks assessment, we inventoried the city's nineteen active recreation park sites. It's important to note that we did not include a review of the Crestmore Canyon open space as it does not provide active recreation facilities or amenities. And when I say facilities or amenities, I mean playgrounds, sport courts, kind of what we consider in our portfolio of recreation, active recreation amenities. The city's parks, these classifications actually come from the two thousand and nine general plan, three large categories. You know, one community park, that's your largest citywide serving park. You have neighborhood parks, which are more oriented towards neighborhoods, but have usually a mix of uses. And then finally, your pocket parks, which are small sites that are really just designed to serve what is adjacent. Okay, so this is the big one. Got lots of information here. All right, so our parks' condition assessment is complete. Well, it started. It started in the summer of two thousand and twenty four, and I think we were in the field in September for the actual condition assessment. And what it involved was using a geolocational tool to assess around a hundred and ninety physical assets located in your city's park. In this chart on the bottom, you can see that we have what our qualifications are. Excellent, good, fair, poor, and non-functional. And excellent means this asset is functioning really well. There's no expected replacement needed in the near term. It might be a brand new facility when it was recently renovated. Good is it's working well. There might be some kind of aesthetic marring to it, but as long as great maintenance is happening, you don't need to expect replacement in the near term at all. Fair is when you get into functional, but definitely leaning towards failing. So fair means you have an asset that is essentially in the near term going to need some type of innovation, whether that's holistically replacing it or doing some renovation directly. Poor is if unusable or parts that are unusable. So it's really run down. It's definitely time for repairs and they meet in the near future. And then non-functional is doesn't work at all. Those are mostly water fountains that we saw in your park system. Okay, so that's what the bottom is. And then on the left, you can actually see how we have categorized these assets into broader categories, right? We have found that this actually helps city leadership decide how to do more because they can see how these assets are contributing to a particular type of recreation. So categories of the athletic and sports, that includes your sport fields, your tennis courts, basketball courts. The major and specialized asset that actually only includes two items, which is the fountain, the dysfunctional waterfront at Cozy Park, as well as the concession stand here at City Park. And other, we included park signage, park storage, infrastructure elements that we identified in our tours. And then outdoor recreation, this is the big one. This is essentially what parks provide, provide playgrounds, provide picnic areas, picnic shelters, barbecue areas, gathering areas. And then in park amenities, these are typically like supportive amenities, so things that make you feel comfortable in the park, seating, trash cans. And then finally, we have a category for trails and natural features which we observe. So the way that you can read this chart is that as you move to the right, that means you have more assets in that category. So the largest asset category of your park system is outdoor recreation, which makes a lot of sense. All right, so some information about what we found about these conditions. So about six percent. Only six percent of your park assets are in excellent condition. Twenty-four percent are in good condition. Thirty-six percent of them are in fair condition, and thirty percent are in what we categorize as poor condition. So sixty-six percent of your park system assets are in a near term, they need intervention soon or very soon. So that's nearly seventy percent of the assets they have in your system. I want to just say that the qualification of how we have categorized the condition of these assets is that I'm a licensed landscape architect, and I'm really familiar with industry standards. I not only work on parks plans, but I also design and build playgrounds as well. And my colleague Tucker, who is in the field with me, is also a landscape designer. So also, as a park and recreation master planner, I will say comparatively, this is to compare to other communities I've worked with in the Bay Area. This is a massive portion of your assets that are in a fair or poor condition. And if this isn't addressed sooner, it's going to continue to extend in deferred maintenance, which is going to eventually end. You might need to pull out complete assets, which you actually have done at Los Barrios Park, and it just becomes a, you know, a non-functional piece of the property, or you'll have to start investing in renovations. Okay. All right, and this is just a cool graphic that kind of shows your parks holistically. The way to read this is that the higher the score, the more the right, the poorer the park is functioning. The lesser the score, the better the park is functioning. So Earl Blendview Park, which is actually your most recently, like, holistically renovated park, I think it's completed in two thousand and nineteen, is in your best condition, and that makes perfect sense based off the design and when it was renovated. Seven thousand and seven thousand and part is not in great condition. We also included demographic and socioeconomic analysis for this park plan. A little bit about why we did this is to answer questions of what are anticipated needs and opportunities for each park? From a public health perspective, what are the implications of adding very many of that in your city park? And because we know that the social development term of health, factors like quality of life, education, neighborhood environment, those are powerful influences on a person's well-being. Prior to having our extended community engagement process, we were heavily relying on the socioeconomic information to help us predict in a way how community members would like to see their parks improved. And I'm very happy to say that with our additional community engagement that we've included, it just kind of reinforces the socioeconomic analysis that we've done. So the data that we pulled this from is from Cal or Healthy Places, California Virus Screen, the CDC. And I think the key findings, I do have this in another report that you can see the full maps, like, really big and really detailed, is what this analysis has shown is that the city's east side has the greatest health and economic and social needs. It has the greatest burden of pollution sources from the freeways, from SFO, maybe roadways. It has the least healthy conditions in terms of rates of poverty, housing insecurity, low tree canopy. It has the highest levels of self-reported social isolation and mental distress. Has the highest rates of chronic disease, the strongest prevalence of disability, and the lowest rates of physical activity. So as you're looking at those maps, you can see the east side of San Bruno, the darker the color typically is kind of showing the extent of that condition. And understanding this is critical because as parks and recreation professionals, we know that parks and recreation are critical to the quality of life in your community. And supporting parks and recreation can really enhance the city as a whole. But this was an interesting finding. So the map to the left is kind of a heat map of conditions, right? So what I just shared with you in the last slide was that the east side needs a lot of support. In terms of the physical condition of your parks on the east side, they're actually doing really well. And I think a lot of this, well, I know a lot of this is from Dan and Travis and their team and their ability to keep very high standard of maintenance in your city parks despite assets failing. Because there comes a point where you can only clean or repaint so far because assets will age out of their natural life cycle. So I wanted to throw that in there that the parks are functioning as well as they can on the east side. And if anything, we did see that there was a couple of parks on the left side that were in need of improvement. On the right side, my colleague Tucker and I, we talked to our GIS expert and asked if we could include a noise pollution analysis in this assessment as well, which wasn't ever so included. And that's because while we were in the field, looking at all these parks, taking photos, documenting quality, we would literally have to stop our conversation. We would pause, and then we would get back to whatever we're talking about because of that constant SFO noise. And so this kind of helps us to know, all right, sure, let's create improvements in our park system, but also let's strategize where that park is going to be most comfortable or how we can make it most comfortable, right? Because parks are inherently outdoor public spaces. And so that's just a bit of analysis that we add to understand how the system is functioning. All right, so in terms of community engagement, we were originally tasked to provide the city with pop-up event materials. So we provided them with these three large forms that they could take to events. So they were brought to the Centennial Plaza ribbon cutting and a tree lighting ceremony. And so we just did kind of dot sticker responses, which are valuable. But after the two thousand and twenty four November Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, we heard that an online community survey would be really valuable. Because commissioners wanted to know directly from the community what they would be interested in rather than us just relying on kind of a socioeconomic or demographic analysis. So in winter two thousand and twenty five, I think this was held for about six weeks in January to February, we held an online community survey which received over one thousand total responses. Ninety percent of those were residents of San Bruno. Nearly eighty are frequent park users. Fifty-two have children in their household, and about sixty percent walk to the park that they visit most frequently. I want to add two special notes to our findings for this online community survey. The first is that only about half of the respondents actually have children in their household. So as you're going through this, I think as I'm going through the results of you, I think you will see that parks are not just relevant to those who have children and families. Parks are relevant as a whole to your San Bruno community members. Additionally, this was a kudos that we got from our MIG Director of Digital Engagement. He always, he looks at our data analysis, he looks at demographics, and then because he's a nerd, he looks at census data. And he was really happy to see that even though this was what we call an opt-in survey, meaning anyone can take it with a statistically valid survey, the demographics or those who responded to it are really in alignment with the demographics of San Bruno. So that being, you know, thirty percent Asian or Asian American, and around thirteen percent being Hispanic or Latina. So it's not perfect alignment, but it gives us a lot of confidence that this survey has really reached representatives of the San Bruno community. And great job to your team for getting the survey out, honestly, because they're on more calls. Okay. All right, so these are the key highlights of what we found in this survey. First, of course, is that parks and recreation trails are important. People are, they love them. Your residents are visiting them very frequently. About eighty percent of respondents to this survey are visiting a park more than once a week, and they do that to exercise, to experience nature, and to take kids to play. In these parks, they want to see more walking and biking opportunities. They want to have more play experiences. They want to have better opportunities to relax and more opportunities to gather. There is a really strong interest in what we call park and recreation basics. They basically want better play structures, better comfort amenities, better support for sports enthusiasts, and more opportunities to do community gathering. There is a very strong interest in replacing old and worn features. We actually included a question in our survey of whether or not an asset should be removed if it has reached the end of its life cycle. And we heard a predominant, a resounding note of please do not remove anything. If anything, please enhance what we have. So that was an excellent finding. And then in terms of how they want to see investments, we asked a question of whether they want to see one big intervention for parks and recreation in the city of San Bruno, or do they want to see smaller interventions spread out? And they went with the latter of seeing smaller intervention throughout the city, which to me shows that folks are interested in seeing improved close-to-home recreation. Overall, however, the perception of your parks is really mixed. So it's almost half and half when it comes to perceptions of character and attractiveness of your park, when it comes to perceptions of the physical conditions of the parks, and when it comes to the variety of opportunities for all ages. The last two are really interesting to me as somebody who's a parks and recreation practitioner of many master plans, is that you're rating really high in perceptions of access to parks as well as perceptions of park safety. These two I have usually seen as rating really low, really negative. Folks often have perceptions that their parks are not safe or that they don't cover enough. So I'm happy to say that in San Bruno, people are really happy. They feel like they have enough parks, and they feel safe in them. They just want more to do at them. And then we included a specific question on the Commodore Dog Park to understand perceptions of that dog park currently, as well as what interventions might be desired by respondents in the future. And what we heard was that there is a strong interest in seeing an additional or improved dog park. And then overall, a very negative opinion of the current dog park, mostly due to its size. And similarly, you can see the conditions that respondents referred to and the quality of that Commodore Dog Park. And then to kind of wrap up this online community survey, I just want to point out this one question that is related specifically to funding, right? So as we were asking the community members, we keyed them up with invest funding. So kind of queuing them, it's these are dollars that could be spent. Where are your priorities? And the number one priority is to repair and replace old or worn amenities. After that, it's seeing a greater variety of features. I think there are definitely strong perceptions on maintenance, but those perceptions on maintenance are more about the age of the facility rather than the cleanliness of it. And then to see improved paths and trails in the parks. All right, so this is what has led us to what we call key directions. Not recommendations per se, just yet. We haven't buttoned down any specific capital improvement projects. But these are the three realms that we really see the city should start moving in when it comes to addressing the park and recreation system. The first is to repair and replace. The second is to provide a greater variety of features in parks. And the last is to enhance trails, pathways, and natural processes within your park systems. So in terms of repairing and replacing, we see playground replacement as the top one. When we started this project, the city had not had a full playground replacement schedule, which we have seen other cities provide, which kind of outlines a playground's typical life cycle and plans for funds to replace that over time. There definitely needs to be some playground improvements in this system, as well as a strategy of how to improve which playgrounds and when. Improving your athletic facilities. So the tennis courts at City Park are the only tennis courts in the city of San Bruno, public tennis courts. They're inaccessible, and they're not in great condition. Also, we need to improve. We're hoping to see improvements in basketball courts, softball fields, and then the multi-use field, which is the only multi-use field that you have at Lyons Park. Also, in repairing and replacing is improving ADA accessibility. Not all of them, but many entries and circulation pathways, we noted challenges for accessibility in terms of level changes. Many of your picnic and gathering areas are inaccessible. And then in play areas, many playgrounds had components that were not accessible. So there might be one feature that somebody could use if they had accessibility challenges, but the rest of the play structure was not available, so. Okay, next one. In terms of greater variety of features in parks. So as our systems improve, as the system improves, folks want to see kind of different varieties. So instead of that standard, like, post-and-play structure where you have a platform and a slide and a swing set, and this is also an industry standard that we're seeing throughout planning and design, is to incorporate more diversity through items like nature play. You can have natural elements that you can play on, incorporating challenge elements, so unique climbing structures, fitness stations that are kind of oriented more towards like the teens and tweens or adults. Certainly addressing the dog park, either renovating that or providing other off-lease opportunities, adding additional comfort amenities like bike racks that let stations and drink fountains. And then finally, enhancing trails, pathways, and natural processes. We noticed in our park tour that a lot of the city of San Bruno parks have infrastructure designed to quickly move water away. And you can see that at La Cueva Verde, you can see that at City Park, and that style of natural process management was super common back then, but now we're finding that there's a lot more productive ways that are more natural and cohesive. So how could the city of San Bruno's parks become part of the natural processes of managing water? Also, support for trails and access to nature within parks. We saw a lot of desire lines in the natural areas of your parks, meaning we saw lots of trails that folks had created themselves to get through natural areas, and that cued us in that I think folks would like to experience nature, especially in San Bruno. And then finally, pursuing options for green infrastructure for buffering, using green infrastructure for noise reduction, filtering particle pollution, and kind of integrating that into your park system as a natural body.
Thank you very much for the information and the presentation. Are there questions from colleagues on the presentation? I have some, but I can see I might always have any at this time. We're going to do a circle back, or?
Thank you very much for the presentation, the assessments. They're a lot kind of handy for people to see their results. I had a question about the, there was a really interesting slide that showed about the negative first, you know, negative positive overall opinion of our parks. Does the fact that this building opened skew that in any way? Like, you know, just make people think, oh, City Park is great because of this, because almost everybody thinks this is awesome? So I'm just wondering if that was factored in at all, the orders? Is there a good way to piece that out? Good question, analysis?
No, the short answer would be no, we did not have any specific questions relating to the recent renovated Racks Center. That would be an interesting finding, but unfortunately, I was just coming through my brain right now. I think of the open-ended responses that were received. And I think there was certainly appreciation for the newly renovated facilities, a portion of facilities in City Park. But I can't say that I, yeah.
No, I mean, that's fine. I wouldn't want that to mask, you know, dissatisfaction with other areas. I mean, absolutely. That was the only reason that I asked. For the dog park question, I'm going to bring my own personal experience into it. My knowledge now passed, but we don't, we never, we only brought our dog to Commodore Park a few times because every single time, there was somebody with an aggressive dog. So it wasn't really an amenity problem. It was a customer problem. So we ended up going to this to Orton Park in South City every time because it was just a better experience. I don't know how, I don't know what, if any, could be done about that, even looking at the data. But that certainly, even if I tried, my responses of presenting the survey, it would, you know, put it down negatively, but not necessarily because of any of these things. So I just wanted to share that as part of the overall story. Go ahead.
I appreciate you sharing that because actually in the open-ended comments that are received regarding the dog park, we saw that dialogue. We saw many comments that said, it's not the dog park, it's the people. Then we also say, we also saw comments that said, it is the dog park and the people. So I think there's an air.
For me, at least, for my family, what's the condition of the facility was not a reason to not go.
Okay.
You know, there was, you know, a lot of those, a lot of those houses, a lot at the same time. Okay. If I had to answer a question, I can. Okay, um, I wanna answer a question, it's not country, so I will, uh, go ahead, stop there, thank you. Councilor Roberts?
Thank you, Senator, thank you for that presentation. Um, what are the basis of, um, the, how you categorize a park that is um functional and also um on slide twenty that are negative, um, against positive on the, or, um, not attractive, attractive park? Um, I think the Commodore Park was recently renovated back in twenty twenty-one as opposed to other smaller parks that are very dated. And so how do we base if a park is attractive or not, or they're functional even though they were recently renovated? And yet, the survey that we are showing, um, shows a recently renovated park that is unattractive. And also, um, on the negative side, it didn't show what are, um, the main problem or that. Because I think, because I think that on twenty twenty-one, um, we received a partial grant from, uh, the state to be able to address the accessibility, um, some of the amenities. And this was just, um, done recently. So I was just wondering why you think that, um, in the survey we receive, um, that it becomes not attractive, it's just very recent that track. Renovated park.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to pull this question apart, but I, I, it feels like there's a variety of aspects to, um, address. So firstly, in our assessment, in the condition assessment, what we were looking at is the physical condition of assets. We were not looking at the aesthetic quality of assets. So, uh, perhaps Travis has shared with you or can share with you, um, in our condition assessment, we have these massive spreads at each park. And so you can see, I'm thinking of Commodore Park, the playground at Commodore Park is actually rated quite well. Um, but there's other features throughout that park that are not rated quite as well, specifically the Commodore Dog Park. And so in, and secondly, the other piece is that the perception of Commodore Park that we were talking about previously in the slide, that specifically had to be just with the enclosed dog park portion of the site and not Commodore Park as a whole. Um, so to answer your question regarding how perceptions may vary, um, I mean, from the, from the standpoint of being a human, I don't know how, how folks come to their perceptions, maybe it's personal experience, personal taste. But I can tell you that the condition assessment that we provided is very factual in terms of how your assets are functioning physically, how they compare to other industry standards, um, looking at their life cycle and when we can expect them to, um, to need improvement.
I agree with you.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so in other parks, for example, uh, Ponderosa Park, uh, which I have visited and I thought I categorized it as a safety park. Uh, but I didn't see any survey that, that was called, that was included to be or classified to be a safe park. Uh, it shows, sorry, it shows that, um, it's in good condition on, on the, uh.
Okay, I'm looking at Ponderosa Park, and so, sorry, so I'm trying to say, you, your question is Ponderosa Park is unsafe, is that?
I thought I categorized it as, uh, unsafe because of the fencing.
Okay.
And there's a, a, a deep, uh, drop on the neighborhood side.
I.
So I wanted to know, um, is the safety net of, uh, classification of, um, a park be safe and are not being safe because on, on the map, it says it's in good condition.
Right, so in the, in the map, that means that the assets within that park, within that park footprint are relatively in condition. And I am remembering Ponderosa right now, you're talking about how it's basically next to kind of a steep hill, a steep slope. Uh, so to be honest, addressing that require a massive renovation of that entire neighborhood, because that would turn into a giant grading project. So we're really focusing that scope on, okay, once you do get to the park, how are those pieces functioning? Uh, and at that park, most of those features are functioning pretty well. Does that answer your question? But I, I love where you're going, where how do parks relate to maybe the environments that they're next to, or the accessibility surrounding that thing?
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, colleagues?
Yes, thank you very much, it's, uh, nice to see the compilation of your work, um. Some parks are really, really great, some are not as great as, and it's reflective of, of your work, so I wanted to thank you for it. I also wanted to thank you for commenting on noise that, um, I think people that live on that side of town, we just kind of get used to, like, you just see, they're here, then you just pause, and it just kind of goes already, like, and then it goes away. Then you continue the conversation. But it is interesting that how, um, from my understanding of the report and my understanding of how trees do help with reducing the noise, that um, there's a lot of trees that, uh, you could use, and I know a lot of shatters maintenance with those trees and it's caused those trees, but it's also something that parks generally have, so. Uh, I know later on, we're gonna get into kind of like recommendations and project lists, but, um, I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, I wanted to acknowledge that our question first was, was the survey provided in any other language?
Yes, it was provided in Spanish as well.
Okay. Um, because the thirteen percent is, um, probably happening.
Yeah.
Basically, but it is interesting.
I understand.
Um, and, uh, those are, those are primarily my questions as I look forward to it. Is recommended in the action that, thank you.
Yeah, I, I was trying to think back in history, uh, when the last time we did a lot of park to playground equipment. My thought is, I could be wrong, is when Larry Mizuka was the Director of Parks Recreation, this is coming into my mind. Um, he's a few directors ago.
Okay.
So, um, and I noticed you mentioned the Fountain of Posy, uh, which, um, again, is being worked on, not done. Um, but you also mentioned the concession at Larry Field, and I was trying to understand, well, because that got updated, uh, and redone.
Uh, we look at what we provided for. Yeah, we're.
Mr. Mayor, if I could answer a couple of those questions, well, we're just looking that up. So we did look back, and our playground replacements occurred in two thousand five, two thousand seven, um, on the majority of our playgrounds. So just first, or some actual dates to historical knowledge. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that we are working toward the contract to bring forward to push the call in April to the council. So you were saying I was right? It was. Okay, thank you, that's my due respect. Um, anytime.
Okay, so then to, um, but also to defend our assessment as non-functional, at the time of our condition assessment, it was non-functional, but we're really excited to see it get some improvement. The condition, I'm looking at the condition score that we gave to the concession stand, and it was good, so concession stands in good condition.
Alright. I think one thing too is, is, I know it was a, a hard for folks to understand, when those, when the new equipment came in, at that point, state laws had changed. So if you could in this area, in this box, sandbox, or whatever it is, you could have had five pieces of equipment. Now you may be, depending on what they are, paying only three, which is a perception of now things have been taken away, they're spending money and giving it less. And I think I made this statement during the retreat, because I think sometimes that's maybe why some people may say, don't, don't get rid of anything. But if you do do the whole playground, new laws may be been enacted that even requires more for accessibility and etc. So I think that's a concern and something that folks need to understand and realize too, uh, walking in, so expectations are set. Um, you had mentioned also, under improvement of athletic facilities, Bell Air slash Lions, a part multiple, multi-use fields or field. Now, Bell Air is the school districts, so it is not ours, uh, and we certainly allowed to use it, appreciative community use, but it's just, uh, it's, it's not ours to, to, like, our side. On the tennis courts you mentioned, which I agree, uh, I thought we had allocated monies to have that resurfaced. We did, and you'll be happy to hear that the RFP went up today. Well, that was just good time.
Yeah, I just found out that I heard.
You were holding that, that card, okay, well, good, so I'm glad we're, we're moving. Um, and going back into picnic and gathering areas, I, I can speak to a time that Commodore, there was none. And Grundy, there was none, in City Park, there were four. So, uh, from four to what we have, uh, and just to go history, you should only be a deposit, refund them. Um, but so in this park, and as far as offering those opportunities, rentals and stuff, when you go in a historical perspective, then we have, we have tried to offer more opportunities, but then in the other side of it, uh, as an example, Forest Lane, you had picnic tables and barbecue, you couldn't reserve, but then that was taken out because of complaints in the area, because of fires that were there and being utilized for other items that weren't, uh, shall we say, normally, uh,
Used for parks?
Wish, uh, during the day.
Yeah.
So, so there's also just a lot of historical perspective that I think needs to be told, because some people would say like, well, Forest Lane is worse than it used to be because there's less equipment and there's no picnic table. Well, there was a, a reason for it. So I think for now, um, and then you mentioned about, uh, managing water. Now, obviously, things have changed, also, the other item was, I wanted to know as far as the county park that's right here, connected, a lot of people use it for trails. Was that taken into consideration or not, because that's obviously not a person we don't, uh, maintain or make those, uh, major trails that have been, you involved?
Yes, so, um, yeah, so just like for the Bellevue Lions Park site, we understand that we only assess what the city actually owns. I think, I think Dan and I went down this like fun journey of trying to figure out what sites were actually called throughout the system, and so I think we ended up just keeping calling at those. Um, that may, and so similarly, yes, for, uh, the assessment of like that natural area in City Park, we did not include the county park. We, we know exactly what we're looking at, it's kind of like, you guys try, you just walk out, it's kind of like this opening, that, that's the natural area that.
Thank you. Were there, uh, questions, comments from colleagues? Um.
Director? One mention that I did wanna make is I think a lot of focus down at the Bell Air site was focused on the Lions field portion of it, um, the, um, the turf. And, um, happy to announce that we just had our Gmax test again a few days ago, it passed. But it is nearing its life expectancy, I'd agree. Do you have anything else from colleagues at this time, anything else we've said? Anything else you'd like to, to leave us with?
No.
On this beautiful day in this, in this beautiful park.
Yeah, somebody, like, somebody's reading, that's great. Now that I can think of, thank you so much for this, for letting me present, it's a great project, and, um, I completely hear your concerns. I've been holding back a reference to some people Medina, but I can't now, it's already out there. Two Medina's on the board and one room.
Well, when, uh, when addressing that, so I would be, go mayor, vice mayor, um, or or whatever, but. I, I, I've heard that for many, many, many years, so it's not a wrong, there's another one too up there. Um, um, any members of the public that wanna speak on this topic, please come to the podium. In three minutes, don't, you have three minutes, but, okay.
In the thousand five twenty skyline, newly appointed Commissioner on the Park and Beer Commission. In nineteen seventy, we had twenty, over twenty park workers. And it's interesting, because yesterday I finished my twenty-third tour, I went to Ponderosa, and I went to Pacific Heights, and I went to one of my favorites in our area, Buck Isle. And I, uh, I saw a lady and her little toddler in Ponderosa, they loved that one. She was having a great time. Um, and what I was gonna say, we had twenty, uh, workers in the park department when I first came on, I think we have six now. There are six, and I am so impressed with the work, the staff, and Dan is such a good leader, and, uh, Travis, and, um, I, uh, the next park I went to was, uh, Pacific Heights. The bathroom was clean, everything, it's got so much potential, and I know that Dan and staff is looking at that to make improvements. And, um, but I just wanna say that we're lucky we have a great staff that keeps our parks and median strips fine, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this topic? Seeing it or not, unless Travis, you'd like to talk next time, sir?
No, I just wanna thank Lauren for being here, um, and our next steps is that we'll continue our work and come to some major findings. Uh, and also, um, have some cost estimates associated, some future projects. This is not, uh, uh, it's not cheap. And we are.
And I wanna thank, uh, commissioners that are here and thank staff, thank you for the presentation we had this evening. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held this evening, twenty fifth, at seven PM right here. This is the city council is adjourned. San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, meaning we call the word. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albers, Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. For those that are able, if you would rise and join myself in the city council and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just strong.
And if you now move on to item four for public comments, remind me if you're not on the agenda. To all speakers.
I have two speaker cards. The first is Jalain Seshia, followed by Mike Monica Steca.
Jalain Bisha. Go to your microphone. All right, thanks.
Hi, my name is Jalain Bisha. I live at four fifteen Cunningham Way. I have three comments, one comment and two concerns. The comment is you guys did a great job on the rec center. Love it. My kids come here every night. Fantastic. Great use. Now, my concern, my first concern is behind our house is like an easement with lots and lots of trees. My house is sustained. Three trees fall on it. Our neighbor had a tree fall on it. We need to do something about the trees. They need to be trimmed. We need someone to come here to look at them. We've had people come from Public Works or Street Department and absolutely nothing was done, nothing. And it's that time when it's gonna rain again and it's gonna be windy and the trees are gonna fall over. That's one. Two, you guys just um fixed the street supposedly. Um, with the speed humps, they're still racing down the street. They go just right down middle. They just don't rank out. It hasn't helped. Not not even a little bit. Um, I know the humps are there because the bus goes by and nobody is on the bus. If there's one person on the bus, like, oh, my God. I don't know if you guys could find a different route for the bus. They could go down Crystal Springs and up Genovin, but we need to do something because someone's gonna get run over.
Be uh, say quick, we have contact and email.
Yes.
Thank you. So uh if we can pass on the the trade that's been on those kind of question that comes up. And we can ask all to the ready department services.
Yes, I'll do that. Thanks.
Next speaker, please. What was the speaker as in?
I'm Jalain's neighbor. So uh Mike Stansel, my wife is here as well. We are Jalain's neighbor, so we have the same absolute same concerns. Uh speeding down the street, but more importantly, uh last big storm, we saw four trees fall on Dan's house on the other side of us. If we had talked to Dan and Travis over and over, and they come out and say, yeah, this is an issue, this is an issue, nothing ever gets done.
And that they're no longer returning my calls. I have tried, I have tried managing for my patients, uh discussing the matter with them. I understand that there is some surveys that are happening that can be power trains or anything like that. But at this point, we actually are following the data.
Yeah, if you if you were, if you would, if any of you would collapse, look at it. Any one of the trees I fell would be either of our houses if it caused damage. It's it's really quite dangerous. I mean, uh, if I got there with the chains on, I'd get in trouble trying to try and fill that thing. I probably get myself killed. But we're at this point, we're just, we don't know what to do. It's on your land. We're we're can't do anything. We can't even bring somebody private company out to go.
Um, and understanding within this seems a lot going into effect and that certainly yields. Would if I date?
Yeah.
Right?
For fire clearance, we're we're starting to look at those those issues in insurance.
Um.
Well, all we're asking is let's be San Bruno. Let's have a heart. Please listen to us because we've been asking and asking and asking. It seems to chill out a lot here. So we are worried. All right. Thank you both. Kind of made contact. I'm asking, I want to know that where the prepared is so that I can follow the process together and find out. Okay. And I know staff is here. Staff states, all right. Thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you for being here. And now please uh go enjoy the rest of this beautiful evening. All right, got any other public comments? We'll move on to announcements and presentations. We do have three proclamations. We're gonna start with uh National Library Week, which our superintendent for services will be accepting. And this is a couple of words that we'd rather hear from Tim. Whereas the San Bruno Library sparks creativity, fuels imagination and inspires lifelong learning. Offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and to draw to new possibilities. And whereas the library offers free and equitable access to books, digital tools and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect and thrive. And whereas San Bruno's dedicated library staff provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration and creativity for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April sixth through the twelfth. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the San Bruno Library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities it unlocks for us every day. Mr. Paul. All right.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Tim Wallace. I'm the community services superintendent for the San Bruno Library. It is with gratitude and pride that I accept this proclamation recognizing National Library Week. This proclamation is a testament to the dedication of our library staff who work tirelessly to serve our community with passion and excellence. They foster a love for reading, provide access to technology and offer educational programs that empower individuals of all ages. The theme for National Library Week twenty twenty five is drawn to the library, which emphasizes the library's role as a hub for learning, access to information and community engagement. Whatever draws you in, the library has something for every. So no matter where you find yourself on the roadmap through life's journey, the San Bruno Library provides inclusive and supportive community wherever, where everyone belongs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul. So I appreciate it. And thank you to all the staff that did the work and provide the service. Next, there is a proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty five Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas autism strength disorder is a complex development condition that affects individuals in unique ways with a wide range of strengths and challenges. And whereas Autism Acceptance Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness, foster acceptance and celebrate the achievements, talents and contributions of individuals with autism, as well as their families and support networks. And whereas through education, collaboration and advocacy, we can continue to break down barriers, challenge uh challenge misconceptions and create a more accepting world for individuals with autism. And now therefore, be it resolved that I Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty five as Autism Acceptance Month and encourage all residents and visitors to participate in activities that raise awareness, promote understanding and celebrate the diversity of individuals with autism. Through the mayor.
Yes, very good. Absolutely. Of course you can. Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick moment to uh thank the mayor, the council and staff for um for this proclamation. Um, autism acceptance is a uh is a a cause near and dear to my to my heart and my uh and my family. And um, so I'm I I concur with all the points made there in the proclamation. I appreciate it very much. I am wearing the uh pin for Autism Acceptance Month. The historically um autism awareness has been represented by a puzzle piece. And what's been interesting is as as has been in the last two decades, a lot more focused on on autism and treatment. And, um, what's been interesting is as, as has been in the last two, uh, two decades, a lot more focused on, on, um, autism and treatment. And, uh, you know, a lot more understanding of, of it. And as more adults with, with autism have been, uh, uh, beginning involved with in the, in, in, in the movement, in the, um, in the, in the science and all of it. Um, the, there's been a lot, there's been a pushback on the puzzle piece because the, the whole idea that person is a puzzle or something to be solved is not necessarily, or it's not necessarily the right message, nor, um, sometimes it's a, it's a colorful puzzle and it's missing. And there's nothing to say in front of our, um, our folks who are autistic, um, either. So they've adopted this, I think, this symbol here, which is a, uh, a rainbow infinity symbol representing, uh, neurodivergence. And I have, uh, I have a bunch and I'm happy to, to share with my colleagues and staff that were, um, also known. So happy to share with you after meeting. And thank you for your time.
Now, thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate it in the background a little bit. And I do think this is an important one. That is why, why I continue to do it each year and I, and will continue to. So now we're gonna move on to proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty five as National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas Arab Americans have made significant contributions to the cultural, uh, culturally, social, economic and political fabric of our nation, enriching a diverse history and landscape of America. And whereas Arab Americans have enriched our community with their traditions, language, art, music, cuisine and customs, enhancing the cultural landscape of the city of San Bruno. And whereas through dedication and education, dialogue and cultural exchange, we can foster greater understanding, respect and appreciation for Arab American community, promoting unity and inclusivity within our city. Now therefore be resolved that I recall you Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty five as National Arab American Heritage Month. City clerk, are there any speakers on?
I have none to speak of.
And then just as a sign, I wanted to acknowledge and, uh, thank Brian, thank Sarah, School District and the other staff. Uh, today, this morning, Nareda delegation, uh, came into SFO and the staff was there along with the school district to welcome them. And as anyone would say, when I said out and go, and he said they look a little tired, uh, that they were here and they will be, uh, starting, um, their time with us and then we'll depart back to Japan. Now let's move on to item six, consent counter. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items on this section unless the council member has requested to pull an item for a separate vote. Anything for a separate vote? Okay. Anything for, uh, a comment, a question that's going to, for me, I have anybody else?
I do. I have the.
Let's begin with D. Consider adoption of resolution expiring intention to reimburse expenditures from the proceeds, uh, certain obligations and directing certain actions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, give a little clarity on the resolution and within the staff report, in the staff report, it says from seventeen and a half million, thirty-four million. And then the resolution, it says seventeen, seventeen and a half to twenty. We just wanted to make sure by approving this that we're not limiting ourselves to that range.
CFO. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Medina, um, Nick Vigero, City's Chief Financial Officer. Uh, the, uh, final action, uh, the council and legal and city attorney can correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but, uh, the, um, resolution for the council this evening is a estimate of what made or, um, we gave a range, uh, based on the previous council discussion that there may be an interest in, uh, funding more than what was presented at the last meeting. Uh, we will of course review this with time council. If we need to bring it back, we will, um, unless, uh, uh, there's, unless there's reason to make the amendment this evening to the resolution. City attorney.
So Mayor, in responding to the question, um, I think that this is just a range, um, it's declaring the intention to reimburse from proceeds. Um, only if I think the bond, the original, uh, bonds that were being issued or more, perhaps the reimbursement maybe was outside of that range, would we need to come back, but this should satisfy the requirements to be able to start making expenditures. And then when the bonds are issued, be able to reimburse the city.
Thank you for that.
No other comments? Okay. Let's move on to E. Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing city manager to accept human pre-disaster mitigation grant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, I want, I didn't pull this comment out there because I wanted to thank our chief and the staff for, for getting done and obtaining this grant. In the staff report, there's over two hundred pages that explain everything that this grant does. Just wanted to make, make sure that we do appreciate this admission of funding, chief. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any question upon us? Let's move on to F. Consider adoption of a resolution honoring Robert, um, Marshall Senior as the twenty twenty five recipient of the recognition of extraordinary service award. So, uh, I am what would like to suggest that this, that the plaque be placed at the seniors there. I think that's the, uh, I believe the family, I believe, uh, Bob Senior was very instrumental, but also I, that was a special place for him and his heart for that senior center and its construction during his time as mayor. It's also without saying, uh, that not only as a former mayor of San Bruno and all of his, uh, support and contributions he gave to city staff, I was one when he was mayor to, uh, the community, to the Lions Club, uh, Bob Senior did, uh, a lot and asked for very little and sometimes things just happened. And he made it possible by just doing the good things that he did, that didn't need to be acknowledged, but just wanted to make sure things were left better. And he helped people along the way and he certainly deserves that extraordinary service award while we're due. Any questions or comments? With that, any public comment?
I have no speaker.
Back to the, uh, council for consent, please. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion hands and second to approve consent, all items A through G. All those who favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously from the vote. Now moving on to item seven, conduct your business.
Receive and file report regarding City of San Bruno twenty twenty five compensation guidance.
Does that leave me? Leaving this mayor, vice mayor and council members, uh, tonight's staff will be presenting compensation guidelines. The staff will be presenting our compensation guidelines for council tonight. Uh, no action is needed. This is receiving a call. Staff, you know, the compensation guideline is the initial step of our classification and compensation initiative for the city. Uh, this is, this guideline serves on the aspirational statement, guiding pay decisions and how the city approaches, uh, these decisions. Uh, and providing a grid structure and transparency to the way the city approaches, uh, these decisions. Uh, this can also be used as an internal and external tool, providing clarity for all current and prospective employees. And also be, ultimately be aligned with the city's financial capacity, resources and organizational goals. When developing these, the compensation guidelines, we identify eight key principles for which are internal looking and basing. Um, first being total compensation. Total compensation is the total value the city provides employees, um, including indirect and direct benefits. Direct benefits, compensation benefits related to base salary and indirect benefits related to, uh, benefits, healthcare benefits, time off benefits, professional development and any days, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, salary ranges provides a level for each position within the organization and building a structure so the city can provide alignment within the market. Performance, performance base is tied to the services and contributions from employees and measured with how these incentives are paid out to employees. And pay equity simply put is equal payable pre-people work, but also building a process within the organization to provide equity analysis on a consistent basis. These four principles are how our organization will be looking out externally. Uh, first being competitive competitiveness. Our competitiveness incorporates the four principles we've mentioned before. It's the structure inside, using that information to compare it out into the market. The city, uh, staff and the city provides seventy, is targeting the seventy-fifth percentile, uh, meaning leaving the market. By targeting the seventy-fifth percentile on total compensation, we're looking to help assist in the retaining and, uh, recruiting the top talent in the organization. Salary range, uh, salary range adjustments, we identified three different types of adjustments, first being polar or cost of living adjustments. These are to help, uh, employees maintain the purchasing power and offset any inflation. Uh, marketing adjustments helps ensure that we are able to make adjustments based on the environment outside and in the market and equity to help provide any adjustments with any internal balance that may occur through classification changes or any movements within the organization. Labor market comparators points out and identifying public agencies or organizations that meet the same type of geographic proximity, size, population and service. And external data review cycle is comprehensive of all of the principles that we've mentioned, uh, together and being able to find appropriate data set as well as a review cycle in the collective market. Regarding fiscal impact and implementation, there's no immediate fiscal impact in regards to adopting compensation guidelines. Uh, as we move forward towards our classification and compensation study, we may require periodic salary benchmarking, um, and alignment to the market. Any future adjustments or studies will be part of the labor negotiation process and subjects. Uh, at this time, there's no action. It's just a receipt of all report. And for next steps, uh, staff will initiate RFP for this whole compensation survey, um, and we will announce it within the board.
Thank you very much. Questions, uh, uh, questions from our colleagues on the presentation for this time? Yep. Any other comment?
No speaker first.
Comments? Councilmember?
Just a free comment. Someone would make you studying the team for, for bringing this together. It's so important for us to be competitive in the market and, and really send a signal out uh, to the public sector employees, uh, or worse perspective, public sector employees in the Bay Area. San Bruno's place is, they want to come forward and make us attractive. So, um, this is really important work. Glad that we, that we're getting that. Just one second. Thank you.
Other comments? City attorney, we're just receiving the report, uh, filed. Do we need action or is?
Mayor Medina, no, no actions needed.
Thank you. Thank you again, Erica. Uh, next move on to item B.
Consider adoption of a resolution approving and updating publicly available pay schedule effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty five pursuant to the public employee's retirement law, Pearl, Public Employees Pension Reform Act of twenty twenty three, PEPRA and Title II of the California Code of Regulation, CCR.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Jennifer Dionis, Assistant, uh, Administrative Services, Department Director. Um, I'm here this evening to present to you. I'm in the right direction. Right there. There you go. Um, to present to you this evening an updated pay schedule, uh, dated or effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, this evening I'll give you a quick objective background, review the actual changes on the pay schedule and then the recommended actions. There you go. Uh, for background, we'll go ahead and get started there. Uh, each year, uh, or whenever there is a change to salary, the pay schedule is updated and made publicly available in accordance, um, with all the Pearl, PEPRA and CCR requirements that the city clerk just threw out. Um, the most recent adoption was in January twenty twenty five where the city council adopted the pay schedule, uh, for the represented employees. Uh, but prior to that, back in July twenty twenty four, uh, the city council adopted the unrepresented compensation plan and an updated pay schedule at that time. Uh, the unrepresented compensation plan was really a pilot program that identified redefined benefit structures and in uh, effort to attract and retain employees for the city of San Bruno. And that, uh, redefined structure really has, uh, the reimagined work week of thirty-six hour work weeks, uh, general leave, um, winter closure and a, a few other, uh, major components to the structure. It was adopted as a pilot program um, and is in effect through the, um, end of the fiscal year twenty twenty six, June thirty, twenty twenty six. This evening's recommended pay schedule has three components included. Uh, the first is the salary range increase to the unrepresented classifications. Uh, on that increase, it's based on a two point nine percent CPI increase for, uh, the CPI period of February twenty twenty three through February twenty twenty four. It would be effective retroactively to January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, and would be applicable to the unrepresented classifications, which was not included in the most recent January twenty twenty five action. Um, this will include, uh, the distribution of the CPI increase uh, as indicated in the unrepresented compensation plan, and that would be the open range, uh, increase based on performance um, or merit-based increases. And then this traditional step increases for those that are not in, uh, one of the three categories. I remember one, two and three in the unrepresented compensation plan. The second component of this evening's, uh, schedule would be to align a future salary range increase with the fiscal year. Uh, this would be moving the, uh, range from the calendar year to the fiscal year. This would be in alignment with our regular, uh, budget process and is recommended at two point seven percent based on the CPI timeframe from February twenty twenty four through February twenty twenty five. Uh, this proposal would take place the first full pay period in July twenty twenty five for that fiscal year of twenty five, twenty six. The third component of the change, uh, in the schedule this evening is to address a clerical oversight. In the January twenty twenty five action, uh, there were two classifications that did not include a previously approved increase in the amount of three percent. Those two classifications include the deputy building official and the principal planner. The fiscal impact for the three components, uh, the first with the retroactivity from January thirteenth, twenty twenty five is a total cost of approximately twenty-seven thousand. Uh, a future update for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six is approximately sixty-two thousand, seven hundred. And there's no additional increase for the clerical oversight that was previously included in the numbers presented at that time, um, and does not have any impact. That's a total of eighty-nine, seven hundred. Um, if approved this evening, the pay schedule will be revised and posted to the city's website. Once it's posted and available, uh, personnel actions will, uh, pursue or proceed. Uh, and then the next pay schedule is anticipated to be brought to you for consideration at the next time of salary changes that is anticipated for July twenty twenty five, um, but is subject to action at that time. So with that, tonight's recommendation is to consider adoption of a resolution approving and updating publicly available pay schedule effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty five pursuant to the public employee's retirement law, Pearl, Public Pension Reform Act of twenty thirteen, PEPRA and Title II of the California Code of Regulation, CCR. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions on the presentation from colleagues? I don't see any, um, and there being no public comment. I'll bring it back for comments, uh, council. Councilor, don't sit there. I always have a comment. Um, I just wanted to make the, the, make the comment how much I appreciate.
I always have a comment. Um, I just wanted to make the, the, make the comment how much I appreciate the, the work to align future salary range increases over the fiscal year. You know, the budget process is, is hard enough, but then having to do a budget, not knowing what, what salaries are going because we're on this, the, the, because we're budgeting for a fiscal year, but there's going to be a potentially an increase middle of that year. I think it's, uh, maybe it's not necessarily difficult, so I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to say thank you for it and thank you to you for, to staff for all of the work and resource.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any action from council? This is, uh, here are no other comments, any action? We'll do a conclusion. Sorry, we're going to put the resolution as written. Your second?
The.
Motion Hamilton, second to Marty Medina, the, to approve the resolution as written by the city clerk. All those who pay, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recorded as a five, a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mia. Uh, item C.
Consider the creation of a city council ad hoc subcommittee to meet with the San Bruno Community Foundation, Board of Directors Ad Hoc Committee on Strategic Planning on a Legacy Project.
As we know, the, uh, President of the board came to vote before us in regards to this. They formed a ad hoc committee. City manager made reference to this at the last meeting to consider a ad hoc committee. So this is why it's on the agenda. And so at this time, I'd like to appoint myself and Michael Salazar to meet with the ad hoc committee again. And an ad hoc committee does not make any decisions, only brings back recommendations from the ad hoc committee. Does anybody have a? Thank you. Okay, um, with that, we will move on to item eight. Are there any council committee report outs?
Speaking now. Um, so I want to report out from the March twenty 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 four, um, meeting of the Bay Area Water Supply and Observatory Agents here at Bauska. Um, we are nearing the end of a planned hundred day winter shutdown of a mountain tunnel for required maintenance. Our total system storage is at eighty eight percent versus, I think about eighty percent now. And hedge hatchy specifically is at seventy six percent. We're normally around sixty two right now. Um, the drought monitor shows drought and extreme drought in Southern California as we, as we saw in January. But it's looking okay for us for now. Um, head check to expectations about median and, uh, local situation at nine percent. So, uh, we received an update from the SFPUC on their capital improvement projects, which over ten years are going to be one point two six billion dollars in regional projects, including significant work on redevelopment pipelines, replacement, uh, and then replacements and then it's to the water system canvas, uh, right here in Lorraine, uh, near the water supply hardware. Um, they're actually going to expand into that, uh, yeah, into that footprint. It was, uh, that story in the KFC closed next to that year or so. Wanted to give unanimously to remain our Bauska Director John Lee to the executive committee of the Association of California Water Agencies, Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and, um, most importantly, we received our draft preliminary work plan for twenty five, twenty six, uh, which includes the continuing, continuing two major projects, strategy twenty fifty project and completing our updated regional water demand projections, which are updated approximately every five years. Um, and we, we use these projections in our water management plan, um, as we did here in San Bruno and, uh, Bauska uses these projections for our a bigger analysis for our strategy twenty fifty. And that strategy twenty fifty is a major multi-year effort focused on long-term water supply reliability, specifically on how environmental, climate, regulatory, and socioeconomic drivers affect our availability in our need for water. We'll do a T drive at our next meeting in May.
Mr.?
I have something, not as close, but I think I walked longer. Um, last week I took a tour with one shoreline representative, uh, toured the blood protection, uh, pump stations, uh, in my district. Uh, interesting enough to note that those buildings are very old and, uh, they don't make parts anymore for the pumps that, the two sets of pumps or the one set of pumps that is on behind Seventh Avenue on the south side. North pump station, which we hear more about, is also problematic. Updated, but, uh, it's very, very interesting, uh, to take that tour and let everybody know. As we wait for the report from onshore line to provide what the full plan is for. It's proved critically important of letting, uh, the circuit for them. Thank you.
We know of other council committee report outs. At this time, we'll move on to item nine. Comments from council members. First item is, uh, council member Hamilton requests to re-agendize continued discussion of the following closed session item, which is listed below. Conference with real property negotiator, uh, agency was, uh, our agency negotiator is the city manager.
All right, just speak a, a short comment, not like all nine others. Um, uh, I'm requesting that we, um, uh, bring this back into closed session to continue the discussion that we had in our first session, our last meeting, and that's pretty much all I can say is the closed session.
There being no public comment, uh, is there any questions or comments from colleagues? Counsel, I'm not sure how much we can, how much information we can ask for, is, is there anything that has changed that would require us to go right into it? And I mean, I don't mind continuing, uh, conversations, but, uh, it is, uh, I mean, it takes some staff time, it's a hard time to have to meet against. I'm just wondering if there's any significant changes that would really prompt having the discussion again. Yes, I wouldn't read it back. Sir, any change? Or is everybody okay? You're re-agendizing this going into closed session. Is everybody okay?
I'll just take the motion to, well, I'm kind of, it's the item that's read by committee.
There's motion on the floor. Second, motion to be seconded, um, as stated, all those who pay, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Four, one. Do that. I have the attorney's. Um, since we're on, Mr. Counsel, may you continue?
Sure, um, I'll leave it to Marty to talk about, uh, second harvest tomorrow. Um, on this coming Saturday is our, the pancake breakfast at the American Beaching, uh, starts at eight thirty. Um, goes to start running, running out of food around ten thirty or so. Um, bring your friends and neighbors, uh, fifteen bucks for a, for a, an adult and six dollars for kids and, uh, all proceeds go to support our efforts, um, through the American nation. So, to see you there.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr.?
Yes, thank you. Uh, three things, uh, with the, the shortest ones first. Um, second harvest is tomorrow at Bel Air. If you are somebody you know is in need of groceries, uh, you can come to them for free. It's, uh, it's at the back of Bel Air School or Fifty Third Avenue, uh, from the hours, uh, two to four P M. People start lining up for that, sometimes at one thirty. Um, and if you are interested in volunteering, if you'd like to have it there, starting at one forty five. So, uh, that's item one. I wanted to acknowledge the twenty three residents have been displaced. For people that are interested in helping out, the idea is contact the Red Cross at six five zero, two five nine, one seven five zero. Um, and it's also my understanding that Bel Air School is, uh, trying to organize some additional assistance. So those are those first two items and that the, uh, my last thing here is to acknowledge that last week's joint council planning commission meeting of the town grant, we developed a number of residents commented on community benefits for public schools. Additionally, last week, prior to the meeting, I spoke with San Bruno Park School District Trustee Kingsley Ma about how does the city and the school district work together? So to better understand the school districts need, I am interested in forming a subcommittee, which I have served on before with the, with the mayor, two week of the school district trustee. Uh, I formalized this request next week, but I also wanted to get a council that's noticed that, uh, this is something that I'm interested in. I think it'll be that official call. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a few items, so, uh, we're still doing okay. So, um, just to, on the, uh, persons wishing assistance, uh, may need assistance. There was somebody who came to city hall today. The city hall has a sheet that has various, was something I came and asked, is there any additional ones, uh, that staff was gracious, uh, gave to a resident that has been displaced and also had extra copies for those that, uh, resigned at the place. So that also was already done and somebody gave by city hall as well. Um, just wanted to update that we've, San Bruno, and we all have been, uh, busy, but I did want to mention just a few things that I've attended. March twelfth, there was the San Bruno Rotary and San Bruno Proven, you know, that that held an event, uh, which was interesting to have some merchants and, uh, here it was more of a social networking. Um, on the thirteenth, as we know, Michael Palmer received the extraordinary service award downstairs and then upstairs on that same night, Jackie Spear held her first town hall meeting, uh, being, so after being sworn in as supervisor for District One. There was a hundred persons in attendance and about twelve watching online. So excellent turnout and thank you to everybody. Um, on the eighteenth, I had a meeting with the South San Francisco Chamber CEO and Daily City Coma Chamber Treasurer regarding ideas and services and looking toward, uh, what can be done with, um, our situation that we have currently with in working together and how we may approach that and in what form. So we just had a good conversation that they, uh, called and spoke about an hour and a half. Um, last Friday, attended the Samaritan House, uh, uh, they called a gala, it was an event, uh, but it was, uh, for those who may not know, the Samaritan House, they do a lot of good things, uh, and help out in many ways. And so this is one of their annual fundraisers. Uh, some, some of us on the, March twenty second, I wanted to thank staff, um, Megan especially, and her team did a great job for the secret volunteer lunch. People need to be recognized. They had a great Mardi Gras theme. Food was great. Uh, this is something that had been on hold because of COVID and after, so now that is back in action. And there was a cert graduation that afternoon, uh, which I went to and spoke, uh, and graduated because it is a lot of time that is put in. And then I finally just wanted to talk about our fair days. Uh, this is something that has been active, but speaking of manager, spoken to the other, other city managers, other mayors, or as supervisors, our MTC Commissioner, the County Executive, um, there is a discussion on how we can maybe, uh, through a grant application that Art is going to proceed with through the Transportation Authority to maybe, maybe, and again, there's no guarantee. They apply and they can ask for the full amount for county, which is no breakthrough, um, daily civic. So no guarantees, but there's, uh, some other things are still in the works because by the time it goes out to bid and comes back and it's past the date that Art must order the gates. So, um, there's also about the conditions. Some folks feel the conditions need to be better, uh, at our stations. I went to our station and did a tour and talked to some people on the platform waiting for the train to get their perspectives, their thoughts, looked at the employees that I would never mention the name, um, to get the honest, understanding, took photos, spoke to our, uh, two supervisors that represent District One, District Five, and, uh, shared that information. So this is still fluid, it is still going through a process, but it's a, and, uh, I'm trying to put it because it's something that, again, it's not an initiative. So I'm just trying at this other end to do that. I think it's important. If there's an opportunity, I want to continue to see if we can pursue it. Um, and so anyway, that was it for uh, Mark Fair Gates, and if anybody needs, wishes more detail, please let me know. There being no others, uh, wishing to comment, and I think we made it through. So we have another twenty minutes to go. Uh, no. So with that, um, I want to thank everybody, uh, for everything. And again, we will ensure in this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April the eighth at twenty twenty five at seven P M. Right here. Everybody have a good night and a good rest of the week.